To order the December meeting of the zoning board of appeals. Uh, first item we're looking at is our roll call.
Uh, Commissioner Koleski.
Here.
Member, member Jacobitz.
Here.
Member Bealy, member Strayer's absent, member Berthold.
Here. We have enough members.
We have a quorum.
All right, good going there. Next item is the approval of minutes from our November meeting we had on the eighteenth. There was a copy in your packet. We had a chance to let it over. There are no additions or corrections. I would entertain a motion to accept the minutes.
I just have one correction before we do so.
Is your mic on there?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Um, it says there was a special meeting at the top, but then it says the regular meeting. Shouldn't we just have that? I know it's probably not going to make a difference. Shouldn't it say the special meeting was called to order?
Uh, yeah, it probably should.
Yeah. Good catch.
And it was the fifteenth. Yes.
Yeah.
Move to approve the minutes uh as corrected.
Support.
We have emotional, have support. Any questions? All in favor, I.
I.
Opposed. Okay, minutes are accepted. Next item on the agenda for new business, we have thirteen thirty-six East Mall Me Street. For a diven- the, excuse me, dimensional variance. We have someone like to speak to this, please? Step up and give us your name and kind of give us a little quick overview of what you're asking for here.
Good evening. My name's Dan Huffpower. Um, plant manager of the Crimson Holdings facility at thirteen thirty-six East Mall Me. And we are requesting a fifty-foot height variance to allow an installation of a one hundred-foot uh exhaust stack for our dryer system. To help improve odor dispersion.
And that's it?
That's it. Yes.
Mr. Huffpower, I, this, this was. The necessity for this was dictated by either the, by the, by the state?
We have been working hand in hand with the state of Michigan and the Eagle Division.
Okay.
And this would be one part of our phased approach to this, yes.
Okay. Um, and do we know that this will remediate the, uh, we, do we have some assurances that this will in fact remediate the issue?
If I could invite Lily and Woolie, she's with the Fishback Organization. She's our environmental consultant.
Hey.
Yep, she'll be able to speak technically to that.
I, I got a couple uh copies of a letter that we had submitted to the state that explains I. Um, they explain all the increase in stack height would help. We can share.
Thank you. Thank you.
Um, we did some air dispersion modeling and it's a, a unitized model. So what it does, it, we assume that if one pound an hour comes out of the stack. We modeled where it basically lands. If you look on page and I have some, there's a, a graph in there on page.
Or.
Yeah. And it shows that um, and I got some better photos here. You can see that um, the shape of the impacts is kind of small and it kind of. Comes straight down in front of the facility and as the wind blows that, you think of a balloon, it kind of blows around there. If you go, we, we considered a seventy-six foot stack, but they've agreed to a hundred foot stack, which is on page six. You'll see that. This, I, I have some color. Ones here look a little bit different. Um. I don't know, I can, you can see it.
Disperses it a lot better. Does dispersing better mean it's spread out over a wider area? Much wider, yes.
So that the smell isn't, the smell isn't as concentrated then?
It's, I think, um, previous information has been submitted. This is an odor problem. We've done stack testing. The, the compounds are coming out of the stack of very low odor threshold. A lot of them.
Meaning, meaning they smell a lot.
Exactly.
Need to keep your cabs on the microphone if you're, so we'll get them on soon.
So it's, it's like a, like a hose. If you let it dribble out, everything kind of drops in one spot, but if you spray it out, it's going at a higher velocity, uh. Higher fat, it comes out over a wider area and you can see some of the numbers. You'll see they're a lot, lot lower the further away you get from the stack. With the um, second diagram than it is from the first. Does that make? Make some sense?
So more people will smell it, but it won't be so bad?
No, it'll be under the odor threshold at that point. Because, because theoretically right now, you know, little tiny bits, it gets more and more diluted as it goes out. Um, but it'll get to a point where, where it doesn't. Um, I think I. We estimated that with the seventy-six foot stack. It would be an, like a ninety-six percent reduction, but then going up to a hundred feet, it'd be ninety-eight percent lower. So that's a reduction in ninety-eight percent with the stack height. Uh, and it's, it's not uncommon when you have an odor issue for the state to ask you to raise the stack. And, and I guess I'd add as a side note that it's also one of the quicker solutions. Um, it, especially a few months back when there was a lot of supply chain issues. You know, it, even if you wanted to do some things, you were kind of limited in what was available. But, you know, with any luck, it was the end of this month or the beginning of January, this stack can be installed. So that's another reason this seemed like a more attractive option. Some other things were like more than a year out. So.
Thank you.
Can I just ask one more question? Did you model one twenty-five, one fifty? Is there any point in that or is?
We only went up to a hundred feet and then, like I said, we knew we had to get the variance and stuff too. It, like most communities, you know, they. It's a kind of mix of, we don't want FAA lights, but we want, so.
Okay.
Any other questions for me?
Dan, Dan, one odd question, sorry. Mister Chair, um, the height, the hundred-foot height is from ground level up to the top of.
It would be from ground level to the top of the stack, yes.
Right.
Yes.
If something were to happen that that stack decides to fall down, is it going to stay on your property?
Depending which way it would fall, no, not necessarily. We, we are currently working with a structural engineer. I actually had an email from them today that they finished their structural analysis. And we're trying to coordinate a visit with him and contractors this week to review those plans and what that would take from a structural support standpoint.
And how, how, how tall is the stack now?
Right about fifty foot, forty-nine, I think.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Do we have anybody in the audience that wants to speak on this? Step up and give your name, please, and.
Uh, I'm Jeff Morton from Continental Service. We're a neighbor to this facility. Um. I'm, I'm not opposed to the stack. I don't know that the stack to me is really gonna remedy the problem unless they do some sort of filtration. Or something to get rid of the smell. Um, we were told back in the spring when this all started, that this would all be handled midsummer. And here we are almost the end of the year and today. One of my guys was having headaches. Um, my lips were numb and tingly. My throat was hoarse. Um, the wind was blowing towards our shop. So basically we get that smell right in our shop. Um, I can speak for Agit Manufacturing, which is right next door. They have the same problem. Anderson Development, they have the same problem. And neighbors within. Six blocks of there at least are all frustrated with the situation. Um, it's dragged on way too long. I appreciate the city and what they've done with stopping it for during the day. That's good for me because I'm not there during the night, but you got a lot of residents around there that are having to tolerate this. And I just, you know, we're all just getting frustrated with it basically. So, I mean. That's all I got to say.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else to speak on this? Do we have, oh, I'm sure, sure, go ahead.
Well, I'm John Morton. I've been, I own, owned it and sold it to my son. I've been there for thirty-eight years. I've been through a lot of this with. The other factories around there, but he's done their best to try to so- solve a solution. Uh, I heard them talk and I heard assumes used a lot. Assumes mean, are we really sure? Uh, one of the things that bothers me is not just the smell, but what is in that that is coming down? Are we gonna have a camp of June forty years from now? You know, everybody's gonna start suing everybody for something. Uh, they cannot tell us. They cannot tell us that this is environmentally clean. I, I, you know, sho- surely they, they cannot do that. Putting a stack up is just gonna spread this out farther. I think. I think there's other things that can be done other than just putting a, a blowpipe up there to spread it out over the country. So nobody. Here, you know, gets a little bit of the last sound out through there, but it's still there. It's the problem. The problem is still there. The problem is what is coming out of those stacks. When this company come in, I don't think they explained to the city what was gonna be there. I don't think they have the permits. I could be wrong. To do what they're doing, when you need to check into that a little bit more, um, it's a. I, I, I'm not opposed to having, having factories and work there, but I am opposed to having people crap in your air, you know? If you had a dog that peed on the couch, you'd get rid of the dog. You wouldn't let him keep peeing on the couch. You know, I mean, it, you know, it's, it's, you know.
It's all you have.
Yeah, exactly. I mean. Yeah, it, it's, it's frustrating. It's frustrating. We hear all these promises and we've heard the promises from the city, we've heard the promises from the. The factory, we've heard the promises from the state, EGA or whatever it's called. Eagle, uh, nobody seems to be able to put their thumb on and, and require something to be done. It just seems to be being, being passed around and I think. What they're planning on doing, I, I admire their efforts, but like they said, they assume this is gonna take the care of the problem. They don't know it's gonna take care of the problem. Why do we want to spend all that money and still put people in danger? People, the east side gets a wrong, gets a bad rap over there. I, I know most of those people that live there, they lived there for years. They're good, honest, hardworking people. And uh, to just ignore them this way is not, not the way to do it. I mean, we need to, we need to have a solution for this. That's about what I got to say.
Thank you. Do we have anyone online to speak on this? No one online, okay?
So first I, from a health standpoint, I'd just like to reiterate, we've done stack testing of our, our emissions. There, there's nothing there that is. Uh, detrimental to health. Would that be correct, Lily and?
Um. Health-based standards that the state has got.
Yes, so that meets the health-based standards. Um, we do currently utilize an odor neutralizer to help mitigate some of the odor. And that might be some to what they're talking to also from some of the side of, side effects uh they're discussing. That is nothing we personally have experienced in the facility. Um, but from the SDS sheets of the odor neutralizer that we utilize and has also been provided to the state of Michigan and Eagle. Uh, there's nothing in those that would be a health concern either. We do hope, um. Kind of our next steps and, and again, I think this is probably a phased approach as we do this. We were hoping the current stack that we have in place would help mitigate it better than it has. Um, there is a lot of, when we look at science and computer modeling, what a hundred-foot stack is gonna do with odor dispersion in the area to help improve that. We do want to get to a point though, if we can, to eliminate the odor neutralizer. So that's one less thing that we're putting out in an emission standpoint. Um, we are already looking at what's the next thing we need to do. Um, which would be looking at like a wet scrubber or a packed tower wet scrubber that would actually then filter the odor out of the exhaust stack. Okay.
Thank you. Am I under the impression, just from what I've read in our paper, that uh, you're on some type of a days, so many days to check on this or monitor this or something?
Uh, if I could, Mister Chair, uh, I believe that Judge Shadler's order was that once this, the stack would be installed and. Uh, was represented to the court that they would uh, ask for permission to install, install the hundred-foot stack and, and uh, proceed with due haste to do so. Once that's installed, then there's a review period by the court and the city of a couple of weeks.
Yes.
Uh, to determine whether it's being effective, at which case the court has retained jurisdiction and will review. The matter uh, after the stack's installed. So it's not a, not so much a, that they're burdened by only being able to operate at night until they install the stack. Then they can resume their full shift schedule uh during that review period.
So there will be, if this is approved, there would be a review of whether it's being effective or not.
Correct, by both the court and the city.
Questions?
If I, I just want to make sure I understand that we are not, we un-experts that we are, are not trying to determine whether this is the solution for the odor problem. We are giving permission for them to try a taller tower and see if that will do it.
A taller tower than the variance, than, than our ordinance allows.
But we are not trying to solve the bigger problem. We're, we're saying you can or cannot try this hundred-foot stack.
We are looking for the height of variance to install the tall stack.
That's the only authority we have is to either grant a variance or deny the variance, so.
But it's not gonna be on the basis of whether we think it will work or not. That's really not a question.
Right.
Okay, it's more of a curiosity.
Yeah, yeah, let's see.
Any other questions before I go through the finding of fact?
We have another comment.
Oh.
Yes, sir. One more. I think he mentioned that, that they have further plans to do something other than this. So is this just a Band-Aid for the time? Or is this going to be the solution?
We're going to find out.
Thank you.
We're going to find out.
But I would reiterate, you know, our, our authority or our knowledge is not expert on any of this. Our whole sole purpose is to either permit them to build a tower or not permit them to build a tower, so.
We have to listen. We have to be heard.
Yeah, no.
Thank you. Want to add anything? Okay. To grant any variance, we have to go through a finding of fact. So we'll work our way through these and we need to find in the affirmative for the finding of fact. One, that there are practical difficulties or unnecessary hardships which prevent carrying out the strict letter of this ordinance. These hardships or difficulties shall not be deemed economic, but shall be evaluated in terms of the use of parcel, a particular parcel of land. Uh. It's our understanding that uh, they are working with this uh, Eagle or however you say that. I'm not sure how you pronounce it. To mitigate this order, to mitigate the odor that's coming from the factory. This is in an industrial district, but it's also in a close proximity to a residential district. But uh. I would find the affirmative, they are working, trying to do, and this seems to be the solution as being suggested, or a solution as being suggested, whether it's the final one. So I would find yes for number one. Number two, the genuine hardship exists because of unique circumstances or physical conditions. Narrowness, shallness, shape, topography of the property involved, or to the intended use of the property. That do not generally apply to other property uses in the same district and shall not be recurred in nature. Um, it says that the, the situation is unique to this parcel, given the nature of the particular industrial operation. I would find yes for number two. Feel free to jump in if anybody disagrees with where I'm heading here. Number three, that the hardship or special conditions or circumstances do not result from actions of the applicant. Uh, we understand that the uh, and help me out here. What is this Eagle? What, I don't know what that is.
It's uh, the Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy.
Okay. Okay, they have uh, required the applicant to complete odor mitigation and this is one of the ways they figured to be able to do this. So I would find yes for number three. Number four, that the variance will be in harmony with the general purpose or intended disorderness that shall not cause a substantial adverse effect upon surrounding properties. Property values and the use enjoyment of the property in the neighborhood. I think we're actually trying to make it better, hopefully, so it would not affect negatively affect it. Uh, there have been obviously a number of complaints over the last few months dealing with this. And uh, hopefully this situation would improve. Uh, and if it doesn't, then I'm sure there'll be other consequences because of that. So I would find yes for number four. Number five, the grain of variance will not confer the applicant any special privileges that's denied by this ordinance. To other land structures or buildings in the same district. Uh, due to Eagle apparently requiring some type of mitigation, we do not see this as a special privilege and hopefully it's going to benefit the. We do not see this as a special privilege, and hopefully it's going to benefit the community. Uh, surrounding there and the whole community of Adrian, cuz I know it's not just limited to that particular part of town. Yes, for number five. Number six, that the variance requested is the minimum amount necessary to overcome. The inequality inherit to the particular property or to mitigate the hardship. Uh, they are working with a firm, and this is the. Recommendation they have come up with for the minimum height. That they feel that this will be able to mitigate the problem. And so I would say that yes for number six, cuz it is the minimum amount necessary at this point in time. Finally, number seven, that the evidence show, uh, excuse me, that the variance shall not permit the establishment within a district. Of any use which is not permitted by right within the zoning district. Or any use for which a special use permit or temporary use permit is required. Uh, this is a height variance, it's not a use variance, so that does not apply, so find number, yes for number seven. Based on finding a fact, I would entertain a motion.
Mister Chairperson, based on the finding of fact, and uh additionally, that this was a consequence of. Of requirements by the state and by the court. Um, I would move the approval of the variance and adoption of the resolution the staff has provided.
We have a motion, do we have support?
Support.
Do we have any questions on the motion? Hearing no questions on the motion, entertain a roll call vote.
Yes, sir.
Chikovitz?
Yes.
Beal?
Yes.
Kalaski?
Yes.
Berthold?
Yes.
Resolution adopted, my name is vote.
Alright, you have your variance for your stack and for the neighbor's sake and everybody else's sake, I hope that. Takes care of the problem, and if it doesn't, I'm sure you'll be trying something else. So hopefully that takes care of the problem, but uh, I'm sure there's gonna be. The city and courts, everybody are gonna be on top of this, so. Alright. Uh, have no old business, anything else uh? To come before us, say? No? Hey, hearing none, uh, we will adjourn this meeting and planning commission will begin about seven o'clock, thank you.
Folks, we will call to order the December sixth regular meeting of the Adrian City Planning Commission. First item on our agenda is a roll call vote, or roll call, who's here? A vote, just roll call.
Uh, Jacob.
Here.
Bob.
Through your present.
Weatherby?
Present.
Johnson. Watson? Taylor?
Present.
Roberts.
Present.
All members present.
Thank you. Next item is uh consideration of the minutes from our October fourth meeting. Commissioners, you, I presume you have copies of those minutes and have had an opportunity to review them. I noticed that the second word at the very first line should be regular rather than special, but other than that, are there any other? Additions or corrections? To. The October minutes. If there are none, we would entertain a motion for their approval.
Move approval as corrected, support.
All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, those minutes are approved. Next item on our agenda, under new business case twenty-two thirty-eight. Update to our bylaws, uh, folks, as you may recall. It was our recommendation to the city commission that the membership of the planning commission be reduced from nine into to seven members. Uh, my understanding is that the city commission has in fact approved the change to their ordinance to do so and to be consistent. We should do the same with our bylaws. Jeremiah has provided a copy of those amended bylaws for your review. Is there any discussion on that or any questions?
Did we not have to indicate that we were going to seven?
I think that since the ordinance does that, it makes more sense just to be silent on the matter.
Because I decided to ask.
Anything else? If there is no other questions about that, we uh would entertain a motion for. The approval of that change to our bylaws.
Move to approve. Support.
Commissioner Love and Commissioner Taylor. We could have a roll call vote.
Yes, sir.
Roberts?
Yes.
Watson?
For.
Weatherby?
Support.
Love?
Yes.
Johnson? Taylor?
Support.
Chikovitz?
Yes.
I'll just pass my name as vote.
Okay, and that that uh goes into effective media. Next item, case number twenty-two forty-one, one fifteen South Main Street, uh.
We don't need another person then, right?
No.
No, you have seven.
We are at seven, we are for the first time then for a while, at a full count, so. Case twenty-two forty-one, one fifteen South Main Street, a site plan review, is there someone in the audience to speak to that particular matter? Sir, if you'd step forward and identify yourself uh for our minutes. And we have a copy of the site plan, but very briefly, give us a thumbnail sketch of what it is you're proposing to do.
Sure, uh, my name is Scott Gibson, um, do you need my address? No. Okay, fine, um, I I am representing the development group uh related to this project. It is a multi-building mixed-use project, um, we are taking, there's five buildings. We are proposing taking those buildings and revigorating them to mixed use, uh, having residential on the second, third floors. With commercial on the first floor and then activating the basement as well to 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 commercial status.
Um, usually when we're looking at a site plan, particularly downtown, are. Our real concern is the change to footprint.
Very modest, and just on, and and just on the.
As to what?
Just on the back.
Two things to elaborate on is the change to any footprint and what are the materials, uh facade materials going to be.
So what we've done on the back of the building is it's it's basically in keeping with what's our, it's repair replace with what's in keeping with what's there, so you've got brick and then you. On the original part, a portion of the back building, that is, that is being. Uh, taken down and replaced, go ahead.
I wanna play back the last page of the site plan, we'll show you what he's talking about, seeing it as visual.
Yep, there there are.
Our architect's gonna be here shortly too, and he could, if you, if I can't satisfy your questions, he should be here momentarily, he's running late. Um, so ultimately, but what we're, this is a historic structure, so we have to be very careful. In what we do to the exterior, the envelope of the building, so we're basically keeping it in keeping with what is already there, at least from a, from a. Material standpoint, so that the brick on the back is that soft brick, it's starting to erode, so we're gonna be replacing that with something that reflects that aesthetic. Very similar in nature, and then on the back, we have, we've moved it about, I think it's about a foot or two. And that's about it, we've, I I believe that staff has reviewed it and I I think we don't have any issues there.
When you say you're moving it a foot or two?
It is to make it more in line with the existing building, there is like a, um. There is a, there's, the buildings are not aligned, so the addition that was done in the fifties. Is not in alignment with the building that is the original building that's on the back that we call the carriage house, so.
If you look at C one. It shows the existing building that's.
It shows the existing footprint, oh, oh.
Yep.
Okay, my C one is part way back, okay.
Well, maybe it's mislabeled, but it's. It's one that's more, it's towards the back.
Did you print your own off? I know, but I, no, maybe it's not, I'm sorry, it's, it's.
A A four hundred dot one?
No, it's towards the front.
It's towards the front, it's the second phase, like the back side.
Ah, 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 okay, thank you.
You bet.
That dark area, the dark area is what they're gonna demolish.
Okay.
And then if you look at eight one hundred point two.
Mm-hmm.
You can see how it kinda lines.
Yeah.
Kinda lines up and there's stairway down the.
Okay.
So it aligns with the adjacent.
Got it, okay.
It it's, it's right there.
Yep. On the street side, uh, it it's that you're not changing, it's just renovation.
Repair replace, yeah, yeah, and even, we're even having to keep the Carrera glass that's on the exterior, we're fixing all of that. So that that's all staying exactly the same, storefronts will be a little, you know, just updated and, you know.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Commissioners, any other questions for Mr. Gibson?
I have a couple of comments. Having experienced some of these projects myself. Kudos to you and your group. This is a wonderful project for downtown. A great old building.
Thank you.
You look at the front facade and what you're doing there, I mean, I walk by that all the time thinking. It's not that bad, it just needs to be fixed, you know what I mean?
Yep.
And um, you really have, are matching all the standards I think that the city has set. And um. I certainly hope we'll all approve this, it's gonna be a great project for downtown.
Thank you for your comment.
Anybody else?
Is the basement? Is that going to be its own? Area or part of?
It will be.
Into a first floor area?
It will, it will be its own area.
Okay.
Ultimately, yep.
Other questions? For the applicant? Watson?
When you breaking ground?
So it it took us a minute, um, we, it's gonna to to pull this together and I say a minute, like a few years, um, but uh, we're we're looking at. Uh, first quarter of next year, so end of first quarter, beginning of third quarter of next year, or excuse me. End of second, first quarter, beginning of second quarter of next year. Yes, sir.
Okay, cool. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the planning commission on this uh proposed site plan? Hearing none, commissioners, any additional discussion? Staff, were there any contingencies uh? That you wanted to comment on?
No, I think everything is represented on the plan, uh. We did, uh, I don't know, this got covered, I was distracted for a minute, but we did, uh. Uh, vacate some public area, which is where the little bit of addition is going in the back, and then uh. Their design, uh, designer agreed to that as part of their project, they're gonna relocate the traffic island that was behind there as well. Uh, so that there will be a, an ability for two-way traffic behind their entry, which there is not now, which will be a substantial improvement. Particularly because it will be a rear entry to the building and. Uh, people will be traversing that area, so it'll be less confusing and adjust that of those right now.
Thank you. Commissioners, us, like I, as I mentioned, staff has reviewed this, and as you note in their comments, um. There were no contingencies. Or other things that needed to be addressed if we so chose.
Move to approve as presented. Support.
Mister Love and Mister Watson? Any additional discussion?
Watson?
Sport.
Johnson?
Sport.
Weatherby?
Support.
Roberts?
Support.
Taylor?
Support.
Chikovitz?
Yes.
Love?
Yes.
I'll just pass your names.
Excellent. Best of luck with that, we look forward to it. Next item, case number twenty-two forty-two, uh, two fifteen North Broad Street, exoning exception. Permit for an apartment unit, is there someone here to address that? And if you'd step forward to the podium and give us your name, and very briefly. Out of like this last example. Tell us what it is that you're proposing to do.
Good morning, board, my name is Jim Moore. And my daughter, Morgan Moore, who is, uh, we're both representing Moore Homes LLC. And uh, we have a property that I've been associated with and owned over the last fourteen or fifteen years. Um, and the building is um, a three-plex, there's a three-unit home or three-bedroom. Um, in one of the units, another one's a two-bedroom unit, and the third one is a, uh, in the past was a, uh. Um, a beauty shop. And uh, we've uh. Kind of much come to the realization that it'd probably be best. To put that back and to be in a efficiency or one-unit apartment, which it should. Fall with under all the guidelines of that. Uh, so we're looking for a zone change of that. Um, and for the reason for it too is because it's difficult to lease as a uh commercial building. Because there are steps up, three or four steps up, both the front and the back. Um, and it's set up good for apartment units, uh, there's eight parking spots. Um, in the backyard, we no longer need any more commercial space up on the, up, uh, along the Broad Street. Uh, being that we have the four, uh. The, uh, we have the, we, at one time, I I think we were leasing two or three. Units, um. Or we were paying for it through the uh, the city. But um, we're, we're thinking that we don't need that part of it either. Uh, you'll let me know on that, I guess, too, if that's even an issue, maybe it's a moot point, but uh. Um, we've got ample parking behind, uh. And uh, so that's, that's our thinking and we'd like to uh, get approval on that.
Questions for Mister or Miss Moore?
Are you in agreement that you need to pave that parking area?
Well, I don't know, I was hoping not to, being that we already have eight parking spaces.
Our, our, our ordinance says if you, if you're, you can get by with a, with a gravel parking lot for one or two units, but once you go to three, it needs to be paved.
Okay, they are not paved.
Okay.
Uh, they're paved up till we get to the parking lot, but the parking lot is.
The driveway's paved.
Okay, well then that, that stands right there then, as uh, as it was in the past. Yeah, on that issue.
So you, we understand that that would have to.
Yes, we understand, we, we're fine.
Okay.
Uh-huh, I didn't know that, and I don't know, I think I, it was neglected to discuss that when we talked with Jeremiah, but uh. Anyway, we, I just thought I'd better say something about it right now, so.
Exactly.
We're in the same understanding, okay.
Other comments or questions?
I, I would just. Uh, it wasn't clear to me that the applicant understands that he has to pave the parking.
I think it was, but okay, yeah.
So you, you do understand that you'll have to pave the parking space?
Yes, we still have to pay for the front parking lot. Or I pay, pay for it, yeah, then the, the front along the Broad Street.
No, no, you'll have to put asphalt down on the rear parking lot.
Where the park, where the parking space is.
Um, we have to do that or we pay for the.
No, 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 there's no paying for.
It's not an option.
Alternative, you have to, you have to cr- create paved parking spaces for the three units.
It's more than two.
So you'll have to have six paved parking spaces.
Oh.
You don't have to do the whole thing. You have to have enough for six parking spots. With pavement.
With pavement.
Oh. Whether asphalt or.
Oh, I see, well, it's a good thing you clarified that.
I'm getting old.
Quite a long lot right now.
Yeah.
You don't have to do the whole thing if you can get six spaces, you just have to have six spaces.
Okay.
Paved asphalt or concrete. Or equivalent.
Need to have six pace spaces from the driveway and and.
Yeah.
That service a man in there.
Yeah.
But you should have someone do a layout.
Well, we hadn't discussed that one yet, what do you think on that? We can't get parking done now anyway, uh, being it's incumbent right now. Uh, we could get that done in the spring.
Yep.
Is that something we'd carry on and we can go ahead and get per- uh, permission to uh. Get a building permit and make the transfer over and get it, uh. It's a rental unit?
It'd be a condition of approval, so before you could get a certificate of occupancy for the new unit, you'd have to create the parking area. And uh, before you go ahead with that design, you'll need to consult with the city engineer too about how stormwater runs off from the. Uh, new impervious surface there.
Hmm. Okay, you, you do know that it is grandfathered, fathered in the way it's been in the past.
Uh, it's not, because you're asking for a change in use in the addition of another unit, which you don't have, so as a condition of allowing that third unit. You would have to bring the parking into conformance with what the ordinance requires for three that building, which is a paved parking area.
Yeah, you, with, with just two units, you didn't have to have it paved, but once you go to three, then you do.
Alright, but um. Well, so uh, maybe somebody here would know what, uh. If it, it was um leased out as a uh, uh beautician. Does that, uh, any type of uh, a commercial can be leased? It within that uh, building, if we pick some other uh. Business to lease that space out to keep the same uh zoning that we have?
At, at this point, since it's vacant, um, you're, you really can only have a. Parking lot that's not paved for one and two family dwellings. So that's what you're grandfathered in for is for up to two dwelling units. With that parking lot, anything more than two dwelling units, the parking lot will have to be paved.
Okay, so if we're not making any zoning changes and we lease that out to say a sign company or something.
You'll have to pave the parking lot.
You have to pay for that anyway.
Yeah.
Does that mean that any other beautician would have to uh, do that also?
Uh, any other use besides two dwelling units?
Anything going forward after that tenant vacated?
Right.
Am I understanding of that?
Yeah, that's correct.
So it has to be done regardless anyway?
Yeah.
If that's gonna be red. If that's gonna be rented out.
Unless you're just gonna leave it as two rental units and that's all.
Well. We have the two units uh, that, that are there that are serviced by the back parking lot, correct?
Yes.
And then I'm paying for two spaces in front. That I, I, I paid to the uh, the city.
You, you. You, you don't pay for any spaces in front.
Yeah, they're taxed on it.
You, you pay for. The, the off-street parking, the, the downtown parking lots, you're probably within the. Parking special assessment district for the downtown parking area.
Maybe, but they're being paid for in the front. Uh, that right on Broad Street.
No, that, there's no, there's no, there's no charge for people parking on Broad Street. No.
I think I'm charged in a special assessment for that.
That, that's for, that's because you're near the downtown and you're paying for the parking lots that are downtown.
Does that uh, for residential or just with commercial?
Everybody.
Everybody.
Next to you is whatever.
Yeah, regards, a- as long as you're in that district.
Okay.
In that location, you're part of that assessment district.
Is he within the downtown development district?
Yes.
He must be, right?
Yeah. So also gets assessed for that.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that, uh.
You're, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
You're also, you're also in the downtown development. District, and so there's an assessment for that as well. There's a number of assessments that you get. That are the result of you being just where your location is regardless of how your building is used. Or.
Okay.
How many units you have or where they're parking. And so the assessment you currently have has nothing to do with people par- parking on Broad Street.
Okay.
So.
I got it.
Just so, so we can approve this tonight? Or vote to approve or not approve?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. You don't have to do anything. If you decide not to. So we don't have to have an answer from you tonight. I mean, we can say you have approval or no approval to do an extra unit. If you guys go home and to say, hey, we can't afford a parking lot, we don't wanna do this, that's up to you. You're not forced to do anything. But you will have the ability to do that in a time of, whatever.
Okay, one question is a review on that then. If we keep that. Going forward as commercial that is right now, there's nothing grandfathered in that.
Uh, not.
We're not making.
It, once it's been vacant for six months, there's no.
The grandfather, any grandfathering goes away, but it's been vacant for a long time.
So we can't move a new tenant in there until the parking lot is done.
That is correct.
So what if we moved a new tenant in there? And didn't even plan a zoning change and then.
There, there's no zoning change. We're not talking about a zoning change.
No, I know, I'm saying like before, like even if we didn't come here and then like. The tenant was out for six months and we didn't even come to the city and then. They moved in, but you didn't even know that we had to pave the parking lot.
Kind of late for that, isn't it?
Yeah. I know, I'm just.
You'd have to do similar to us, he was, was the certificate of occupancy, so then we would have went into the system scene. You haven't had anyone in there for. You know, six, eight, ten, twelve months, whatever it is, and then we would say you'd have to pave it, so.
Even if it still was a commercial like.
Even if it was, they, they need an occupancy on permit to do that.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so is it? Six months or twelve months?
Six months.
Six months.
If it's been vacant for six months. Then any grandfathering lapses.
It's been about that. Might be tough to get somebody in one day or something.
And I think what this, what, what the vice chairman was saying is that if you decide that you wanna do this, you, you can ask them for approval and decide later if you wanna do it. Right? So you can say, yes, we wanna put that in and we will pave that, but we're not gonna allow you to do it till you pave it, is I think where he was going.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Is.
Okay, so you.
So you can make the decision later, regardless, you have to pave it. So if you wanna just request it. They can grant you it, but you can't do it till you pave it. And even if you wanna put another salon in there, you can't do it till you pave it. So your best bet is to request what you're asking.
So in other words, we can't get a tenant in there yet.
Till you pave.
Until we have the paving done.
Right.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
I, I will say, Mister Chair, uh. That. If it's, if it's so that he's in the downtown. Special assessment district.
Almost certain.
Um. If they only had parking for the. Two units, the two residential units. And the scheme was that commercial tenants parked in the. Municipal parking lot.
Yep.
That would be permissible, but. To create a parking lot for commercial use or to create a parking lot for more than two residential tenants requires that it be paid.
Mm-hmm.
Just to be clear on that point.
Okay.
If, if that's clear.
Yeah, and then bear in mind what Commissioner Watson had to say. You have a big area behind your. Your home there.
That's correct.
I'm looking at an aerial view that shows. Uh, five cars in the line right behind the home. With room for at least one more there. So you could probably pave half of the back. And not have to pave the other half. So when you. When you start thinking about the cost involved, look at that versus having to pave the entire back, oops, sorry about that, the entire backyard. Yeah, that would get into how it has to be designed.
Yeah, and not hit another. Car. So you're gonna need clearance, so you need a driveline. And you need backing out space and pulling in space. So I mean technically, like if it was a U of M and they're trying to put.
Yeah, turn, turn your microphone up.
Yeah, true.
So they're trying to put five hundred cars for fifty dollars on a parking space on eBay, that's. That's one thing, but if, if it's gonna be a parking lot with parking spaces.
Yeah.
You're gonna wanna make sure you've got clear distance.
Here's what.
Have an actual layout.
Here's what we can do.
Mentions.
We, we, we can approve your request. Tonight. Condition, conditional. Uh, we, we can consider the request and can possibly approve it conditionally. Upon. You, you doing paving for six, six parking spots and have it, and have a layout of that parking lot approved by the city prior to doing so. By the city engineer. Correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
So we would then be waiting and, and when this is the parking lot in, then we can get a building permit?
You could, it would relate to when you can get a certificate of occupancy.
You could, you could go ahead and do your, your, your conversion to a, to the third unit or do a. Renovation of the commercial space, whatever you want. It just couldn't be occupied until you have the parking lot.
Yeah, which could be done in two days. It's, at one time it was.
Depends on the weather. No.
All inside.
The building.
Oh. Just for a point of information, it was at one time in the past, it had to been a, a one-bedroom apartment. And uh, when it was switched over to that, it probably was uh. Re-approved at that point in time, it had to been because it's approved as zoning uh, for.
So like I said, we could, we could approve this, but it would be conditional upon the, at some point, the parking lot being paved and you. Showing the city engineer where the pavement's gonna be and where the parking spots are gonna be.
Yeah, just a point on that too. Time does go on and, and, and it does. Include a bunch of additional costs of sitting and waiting for it.
Mm-hmm.
Where we've, we've already waited. Um, I don't know, it seems like a month and a half or so since we first got together with Jer- Jeremiah to get going for a meeting with your board, which is normal. But then we've already waited a boy to time in that before and which uh, puts us up to the point now that we fall within the six months.
Well, we, we, those are, are two options this evening are to either deny the request or to approve it with those conditions.
Mm-hmm.
Or to not take any action at all.
Right. Well.
It's either sell it or get it paid.
We'll get it paid.
Hey.
Okay, thank you. Let us know on that and hopefully everything will pass from this point in time and uh, I'm under the understanding I can go ahead and get a. Building permit with Jeremiah.
Well, let's, we haven't, we haven't, we haven't acted yet, so hold on, you know, but you're, you're getting a little ahead of this. That's kind of what we're planning on, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Commissioners, um. The folks have told us what it is they propose to do. Um, this is for two fifteen North Broad Street. Their desire is to add a third apartment. Uh, a third unit in the building. The ordinance would require.
The way I read it, they're. They're well within their means to put.
Yes, yes, yeah, yes, exactly.
We're not putting the car before the horse here.
No. Um, but it would require. Paving, um. In which case, though, if we so, so chose, uh. We could grant a zoning exception permit to allow the third part apartment in the unit of. With the understanding, with the condition that the uh, they would have to submit to the city engineer. A diagram showing where these six parking spots will be and pave the parking lot to accommodate those. Before occupancy. So.
Move to approve with the conditions.
Support. Have a motion, Commissioner Watson, support from Commissioner Taylor. And the motion is to approve a zoning exception permit for two fifteen North Broad Street, subject to the conditions. Of uh. This. City engineer approving a parking lot plan and the parking lot being paved. That. Our understanding of the motion, okay. Any discussion, commissioners? Anybody in the audience or online that wishes to address the planning commission on this particular matter? I presume we didn't receive any written or phone comments on this?
No, we didn't.
Okay. Unless there's additional comments. Um, we are ready for a roll call vote then.
Johnson. Or Watson.
Sport.
Roberts.
Support.
Taylor.
Support.
Chokovits?
Yes.
Love?
Yes.
Weatherby?
Support.
Motion passed by unanimous.
Okay. So. Best of luck with that. Folks, it wasn't on your written agenda, but our next, another item on our agenda is consideration of the. Twenty twenty-three meeting schedule, and I believe that uh, you received that. Not in the packet, but as a separate item. Here's a word. No, I lost my, I've got it here somewhere. Um. As you've reviewed this. Do we foresee any one of those potential dates where? A sufficient number of us would not be able to be present?
I'm sorry, I wasn't paying attention. Oh.
Thank you, Brian.
Oh, I didn't see that, sorry.
Uh, I, I know that uh. My review of this is that it does accommodate. All of those cases, at least one, two. Three of them where the city commission will meet on, on Tuesday. The other ones with asterisks. And I've reviewed my schedule and I think. I can make all, at least at the moment, can make all of those meetings, um. Our only concern would be if there's any one of those where, you know, a whole bunch of us wouldn't be able to make it, so, and. Okay.
No. It's the last week of March. It's fully in March.
Good try, everybody.
Yeah, I, I hope so.
Yeah. Okay, okay, she's made arrangements for you, Chad, yeah. Um. And, and so unless there, unless there's some. Big to do about any of those dates, um, we would entertain a motion for approval of that calendar for the coming year.
Will we adopt the uh, schedule as outlined by staff?
Support.
From Mister Taylor. And. Commissioner Roberts, thank you. All those in favor, please indicate, indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Uh, certificate of occupancy, Jeremiah had provided then in the packet. What do you wanna say about that, Jeremiah?
I will defer that to the city administrator.
Okay.
So this was brought uh, to our attention at one of our uh, community development staff meetings by our building official, um. And uh, it's a. I- in many communities, you have some pretty clear understanding of what. When a new certificate of occupancy needs to be uh, obtained for a building. I mean, the building code would tell you that's true of. The use changes, but it's beneficial. Uh, like in the situation we just had. Uh, to have a standard in the zoning ordinance where if a use has been. Uh, has ceased to exist for a period of time, that there is this review. Uh, and it allows, i- it assists in keeping properties kept up. Uh, among other things, and so we tried to, some ordinances are more. Uh. Strict than others in this regard. We tried to take a middle-of-the-road approach here so that. Uh, the review that needs to happen, uh, if a property goes vacant for six months. Is, and that's the period of time that I believe we stated in the uh, proposed language. Is one that looks to the property to make sure it's compliant with. The uh. Property maintenance code, which all properties need to be in any event, but it's a convenient time. To review that as, this will typically be a commercial property. Right? To review that as it relates to that particular property to make sure it's kept up the way it should be. And then I think we also added in there uh, a requirement that uh. Uh, there be a uh, trash enclosure, a dumpster enclosure in place uh, for any such site. Uh, so that if they've been functioning with an unenclosed dumpster sitting on the site, that um, uh. We can address that at that time because under our ordinance today, all, uh, all. Uh, trash receptibles should be in an enclosed, so.
So a, a big hope too is um, park, parking lots. So let's say it doesn't skip out, it's a restaurant, if another restaurant goes in. I can't exactly enforce super hard on that, so it'd be nice if I could say, please re-stripe your parking lot. I can reference property maintenance code somewhat. Um, but these reviews would be really nice to us to get them to conform, just like everyone else has to.
It's a, i- it would be required that a person who's reoccupying a building that's been vacant for six months come in. And uh, get a new certificate of zoning compliance and that review process then will let us look at it. For compliance with the property maintenance code, uh, yeah, which is Jeremiah says, does require all these things anyway, but.
Just terrible.
This, you know. Provides an administrative mechanism for requiring that review.
And we put together, this is just from a businessman's aspect. For too many years, stuff just got pushed under the rug and, okay, whatever, blah, 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 and now we're in force in the rules, which I'm really in favor of. But a lot of this information needs to be pushed out to the realtors and the. Commercial property owners or the rental property owners in town, so they know this stuff. So they know what's aware, you know, you know, like, there's two. This gentleman here had no idea what we were talking about.
And, you know, and it's not.
He probably wouldn't anyway. It doesn't, that's not right. It doesn't matter, but. I wouldn't know this.
Mm-hmm.
You know, granted, I'm in Madison Township with my property, but.
But.
There's no, it, it frustrates me when. Taxpayers come in here and they don't, they don't know because. For too long, other things have been going on.
Mm-hmm.
And like, this is, this is exactly what should be going on to clean up our city and make things. Though it's gonna irritate people, it's what needs to be done, but it needs to be. In right, I mean. It needs to be pushed out for realtors and commercial property, you know. You guys have access to that information. I'm sure it's not a very super long list, but we could find. It's a, money in the budget to send out a packet that says. Here are a lot of things that you guys need to know. And it'd be good for you to know these things. How do you feel about that, Don? Do you agree?
Absolutely agree, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, most of the time when there's a problem is because someone doesn't know.
Yeah. Well, it's not the way it used to be. That's.
The grandfather.
Rule, but it didn't get forced.
Or they just look at the zoning use, well, it's zoned for that, so I should be able to do it.
Exactly.
And it was, yeah, a year ago, it was a beauty park.
Good point.
Might not have been a truly conforming. Operation.
So. We should have this on our agenda for next month. For a public hearing.
If you guys wish, yes.
And our action then would be to recommend this change to the ordinance to the city commission.
Correct.
Okay, then please put that on the agenda for. The January meeting.
Will do.
Anything else, folks?
Will there be specific amounts of time listed?
Well, six months.
Oh, did I miss that?
It's on the back.
The back.
Yeah, you gotta turn it over.
That's why I asked that question. Jeremiah went fancy in the two-sided printing. Talking about something that I have no.
Staff, staff was doing everything.
I was talking about it, not knowing it was not. I remembered what it was supposed to say and I thought. Is this for commercial?
Well, that too, that, that can do it too.
I'd like to commend staff on trying to save money by having everything on two sides here or something.
Yeah. Is there any other business to come before the planning commission? This evening. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes?
Commissioner Roberts has.
Yes, Commissioner Roberts.
So, um, thank you, and I, I wanted to alert. The planning commission that this is my last planning commission meeting. I have decided to step down. And last night we appointed Commissioner Goss to take my seat. Yeah, I'm doing this not because. I don't enjoy, I, I find this fascinating, honestly, and I, I started coming to these even before I was appointed. But I, I'm going to concentrate some time on creating a citizens academy and I really think that. That will take up some time to get it done correctly.
We read about that. Yes, was that in the paper? Is that where I saw?
It wasn't.
Okay, that's where I saw.
Yes, so I'm hoping that that will happen. I can't say for sure that it will, but I would like to at least. Make a good faith effort and put my time and energy into that instead.
Well, Mary, thank you for your service on the planning missions and, and thank you for.